There you go, that's the back page if you wanna go forward or how we're gonna do it. Well, you're right, okay, we have a Kelsey Road map, that should probably go on the file for the road file.
That's an extra, I do have.
It's an extra, is this one that we got from here? This is one we got from the surveyor, I believe.
Right, there, there's recorded copies, what you have are the filed plan recorded.
Oh, a lot of them, oh, the MIR MACD.
Yep, yep, so everybody has, that's just an extra, I don't know if someone hasn't taken theirs.
This is a copy.
Oh, I know why, you have three.
Yeah, I don't.
And he's recused himself, that's why, okay, I'll put it in the file.
Yeah, I put it in the road file.
Yep.
Uh, health trust you've already something there?
Yep.
Where's that?
No, I think it was based on last two years ago.
Yeah, where do I go, this one, that's the health trust, right?
Yep.
Motion to agree. No, this is something more, so, I don't like this one, you're signing, it's your going on.
Oh, is that the renewal package, I don't know.
Looks like it.
Somebody put it, okay.
Wait.
I didn't know, so it was there.
This is the, the old stuff we already got, wow.
I do this one, and then write this one. I just have to ask you about the letter you asked me to draft up for, for Harvard.
Yeah, we were looking into this before we signed it, because are, are we committing ourselves to next years?
No, they, in, in there, just like most contracts, you have to put something in writing with a, with a thirty day notice too.
Well, it said, please return the signed membership agreement together with the certificate of authorizing resolution. Though, to me, that sounds like we're agreeing to get our insurance from them next year.
Is that the PLT?
No, it's his health trust.
Health trust?
Yeah.
That's the, um, employee's insurance.
Right.
So, we gotta, I'd rather, I'd like to look at that.
KLT is going out of business, aren't they?
Yeah, that's what he said.
Yeah, possibly next, by next year.
Well, not, well, KLT, this, this is something same as PLT, isn't it?
See, the thing is, they. No.
That's probably liability.
Yeah, that's right, it's not the same.
No, this guy was on health trust.
Right, we got two of your own school.
No. No.
Oh, yeah, wasn't he, he was from?
No, PLT.
Oh, okay, I thought you were from.
Yep.
Yeah, that's why he's here, because, yeah, okay. And workman's comp, right?
No, Primex is workman's comp.
Yeah, you gotta, the work guy keep all the stuff straight.
They offer it.
You do, yeah.
PLT offers it.
But I thought, I thought the problem was, they couldn't co-mingle the funds, that's why they were gonna go out of business unless they can.
Right. Not to them, we go to Primex.
Right, they, they offer, they, they, like, we, they want you to work against comp, right? But the town doesn't have work against comp for them. I work against comp for super homes.
Would you like it scanned there?
Well, I mean, it's not too difficult, is it? It's not that whole book too, is it?
I could scan, I could scan that part of it, um, but I'll also find like.
Well, it's the whole thing, I mean, it's a whole. It's comp, yeah, I mean, it is like twelve, thirteen pages double back to back.
Well, that's easy.
I could scan.
So, if he can scan it, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, could you?
That way we can digest it, we can come back to it next week.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, that's, yep, works, man.
Okay, yeah, 'cause, that'd be great, there's a lot of stuff there. All right, I think that's the mailbox.
Yep.
Done, good. Well, I was pulling the solid waste daily contract for the school stuff like that, um, scrap tire recycling. I don't know if you're using these people or not, but just for the, it's only a buck fifty for passive tires, stuff like that, so, and two for light truck. I don't know if they use these guys or not, or?
Who's in their company?
Uh, JP Ruthier and Sons Recycling Corporation out of Lobzamass. Because it may be cheaper for everybody and the brothers, so, I'll, I'll use it.
Why you pay?
Charge them three bucks a tire at the dump.
I know, but unless you pay the.
Think it's, uh.
See, he got new somebody new this year.
Yeah, I think ours is like a buck and a half now, something like that.
Yes.
And I figured what the price is on, on truck tires, since it's more on truck tires.
Yeah.
They have listing here.
Also, just for waste collection, any, any freeze on waste oil, if you have any.
We do, we're, we're not licensed to have antifreeze.
You don't have to be licensed.
We're not, I shouldn't say licensed, we're not set up for antifreeze, we only do waste, and you can, and we do recycled oil, that's what we do, that's it. The other stuff goes for hazardous waste.
Recycle oil, oil, uh, when you recycle, what do you mean by recycle?
Motor oil.
Motor oil, but when you have gasoline added to it, it's not hazardous waste.
Right.
We don't take that, we only take clean oil.
Right, and when, and when you say you recycle, where you, how do you recycle it?
They come and pump it, they come pump our tank, we have a tank?
Who, uh, who does?
It's, um, they just changed their name, they, they've spent under the state contract.
Okay, so it's, so they're paying us for it then, it's one drive it out?
Nope.
There's supposed to be twenty five cents again.
Never, it, what's the name of the oil company that you're talking about?
It's Oil, uh, Oil Energy Recovery Incorporated.
Yeah, they're out of Wentworth, right?
No, that's Mike Wentworth, that's Wentworth Greenhouses, he used to have the contract ages ago.
Yeah, he's the, they're the ones we've been, we've done business with for, one of these.
I would recommend we go with these people and let's get some money back into it, you know, so that's why, they just happen to catch those, it's good.
Yeah, I'll have to call them because we have kind of a unique situation and see if they're gonna do it.
Yeah, you should just come with a pedal truck, drive it up to it and suck it dry.
Yeah, some of them were, um, I know when we switched tanks, 'cause we have a small tank now.
Yeah.
I had, I clarified with the company that we're using right now to make sure that they were willing to come out for small quantities.
Oh, yeah.
So, I wanted to make sure that they were willing to come out for small quantities.
Well, it should.
So, you're talking, they probably be looking at about a hundred eighty gallons a pickup.
Let's do it on a milk run, you know, just give them heads up before you're completely full, in case you get a lower shot, and, although a milk run, but, you know, stick the tank, you know, a hundred gallons and the milk has a check. It's funny coming back into the town, instead of going out for free. Just, thought it's what I'll do. I'm sure the price I also forget, but.
I'm done.
You got Thomas, you got anything?
I just have, uh, I want clarification from the board, you asked me to draft up a letter.
Right.
And sign it from me through the board.
Yeah.
And, um, personally, again, I feel like the letter would hold, uh, more strength in the future, if this comes as a document of, you know, my files, if it comes from the board as a whole.
I agree.
I'm good with the way, if, if, I'll throw it, should do it, I mean, it comes with a full backing of us anyway, who signed it, but six and one half dozen of.
It's up to you, I have drafted up both ways.
I'm okay with it coming, coming from the board.
It's fine. And that's just, got page one, right?
Well, the other, um, since we talked about that, it was a couple of weeks ago, right?
Yeah.
I, I, I rethought about it, and I, and I almost think, because of the nature of the letter, that maybe we should pass it by the attorney, I, I really do, 'cause. Who knows, you might, there might be something in that letter that he would not agree that we put in writing.
No, whether it's Steve or Laura, I'm probably gonna Laura, 'cause she's familiar with that situation.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, what do you think there, Thomas?
Well, that keeps all our control.
Yes.
That's all, that keeps us out.
I don't think it's gonna, you know, it'll be a quick, probably just an email back and forth and.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, he, he might say, yeah.
Well, that, that's fine, but, um, I still think it should come from the board when we.
Oh, yeah, well, I agree with that, yeah, I think we all agree with that.
It was, yeah.
Okay.
So, do you wanna sign it down and just hold it?
Yeah, yeah, we'll hold.
Then that way, if you come back with a pause of, we.
Yeah, then we go, otherwise, we shred it and style it.
Okay.
That's good. There you go, so, this will be, just draw on the vault or whatever, and so we get a.
Yeah, I have a vault, yeah.
Yeah, responsible town attorney.
Okay, I think that's all I have.
I'm worn out.
I'm pretty done, yeah.
You have things to talk about, too?
So, I think it's your turn. Yeah, your turn tonight.
Okay, this week, I forget what day it was, man. We had a, a mandatory walk-through for the town hall roof.
That's Monday.
Monday, okay, and we had, uh.
By whom, who was the mandatory for?
For the, uh.
Vendors?
For the vendors.
Oh, crap, we're all about to.
Sam came to the rescue.
So.
And I was out of town.
Yeah, you sent an email.
See, I did put it on my calendar when I was, okay, continue.
So, we had two vendors, uh, show up. And they both, first, they both highly recommended that we not go with a metal roof for that building. Two reasons was for the historic nature of the building, and with the pitch that it has, you can see the whole roof just about anywhere as you stand, so it would definitely, uh, stand out as a metal roof. Right, that was their, one of them said he wouldn't even bid on a metal roof, that's how strong he felt. And as far as the slate roof, they, they mentioned, and I don't think any of us are aware of this, there are different grades of slate. And, and they can go from the lowest grade to highest grade with double across. So, when, when they come in with a bid.
Well, then, we can.
They, they might not be bidding on the same material.
Well, we can always, uh, issue an addendum to, to determine which grade we want.
Okay, so they, they, well, one of them recommended we go with S one, which is, uh, I don't know, all of a sudden, I got something in my throat.
Like water, it's.
Yeah, S one is, is the top grade, and one of the biggest factors on that is, the color will never fade. Most of these other ones, lower grades, over time, the color will fade, or change colors or whatever, so. But do you wanna, I mean, how are you gonna send a, a new addendum?
Did you, did you, did you get the names of the vendors?
Well, one of them I get, they.
Is local.
Yeah, and the other one was supposed to send you his card, an email.
I talked to someone, okay, I did send, I, I did send the bid packages to someone via email, you think that was him, that?
I don't know, you lost him.
Okay, I'll contact him.
'Cause I asked him for a card, and he didn't have one, and he was gonna, he was gonna send you an email with his card.
Okay, and what, and the addendum is that we wanna use S one?
I don't know, is that what we're gonna go with, though?
Well, I don't know.
Now, that's the top of line grade, right?
Yeah, and that's what he, that's what he suggested.
Well, if they both bid S one, then it will be comparing.
Well, I would think he would want, yeah, ask for the S one, well, how many different grades are there?
Four, five, I think.
So, let's go with the highest, and then if we have to back it down, we'll back it down.
Uh, well, even if partly didn't, we could ask them for a couple of different grades, so that way we can compare apples to apples, and, you know, we, 'cause that's, hypothetically, we'll just say it comes in at a hundred thousand dollars for S one, and I don't know what the grades are, but we'll say S four is thirty thousand dollars, I mean, if we have a couple of different ones in the addendum, so they can do all, you know.
Then you could ask for the highest, the middle, and the low.
Exactly.
Ask for three.
I don't know what the grades are on slate.
Yeah, I don't know what the grades are, I, they just.
You guys know what the grades are on slate?
I, I always thought slate was slate.
Me too.
Well, the other thing, they, they both agreed they would only get slate, that's another thing you should specify, that they both agreed that the slate should be.
Vermont?
Vermont slate.
Yeah.
'Cause, yeah, I guess you can get slate from your dumb salt somewhere.
Well, I think Vermont slate is what we wrote that spec around.
Yeah, that's the, yeah, that's what they.
Yeah, probably, then we just clarify, we.
Yeah.
Okay, and then, one more thing, is one of them came in this afternoon, or this morning, when I was in the office.
I must've been in the class.
And, what?
I was at my class, I was out of the office.
I don't know, and he said that, uh, he'd been, uh, checking for availability, and what we have on our spec is a twelve by eighteen.
Oh, okay.
And we went by that, 'cause that's what was on the roof before.
Right, yes.
Says there would be no twelve by eighteen slate available to mid, until mid-December, so he wanted to know if he could bid on ten by eighteen, I think, yeah, ten by eighteen.
Which is what is here, I think, I, I was here, um, this is what was original on the building, which is the, what we wrote the spec up to, and this is the sample that was given. This is actually a black, but he said there should be colors in that, green, gray, whatever that.
So, I would assume if there's no availability till mid-December, that they're both gonna have the same.
Problem.
Problem, I would think, so, if we're gonna allow one bidder to, to change the spec, then we need to allow.
Well, I guess the question, do we wanna change the spec, do we wanna go from a twelve white to a ten white, I mean, I don't know.
I think, um, if it's, if.
Imagine over a roof that's fifty, sixty feet long, that would probably affect the look of it.
Well, I would assume.
It's not possible.
But is it, you know?
But is it noticeable enough?
Noticeable enough to matter, it's Monday, yeah.
I mean, that two stories up, sixty, you know.
Fifty-five, you always wanna notice, you know?
Notice what, what that.
Yeah, I don't know if you. So, we get a bid on both? 'Cause if these guys, I mean, when are they gonna do the installation, are they gonna do it?
Well, that's the other thing. I mean, they're kinda concerned that, you know, by the time they put in the bid, and we open the bid, then we want a public hearing, and so you're looking.
At the center anyway.
In Mov- November.
Yeah.
Before you even award the bid.
Right.
Then we gotta turn around and order the stuff, and that's usually a three-week turnaround, so we're.
It's your end of December.
Before we get even started, you're not sure there.
I'm sure I think I wanna do, do a roof assembly.
Yeah, a slate roof or a second.
I don't know, I have no idea.
Cold stones.
I don't, I don't, they wouldn't wanna be able to.
I don't either.
Go for spring, so that way they can plan ahead, you know?
Whatever, so, I say don't change the spec then.
We'll just have to get through the, uh, get through the winter, one time.
The winter, yeah. Gotta buy some good types.
Well, he worked at the roof.
Yeah.
One of them, and he says, he doesn't really see that big of a problem, because where they're, I forget exactly how we said it, but where they're breaking, there's still another slate underneath.
Yeah, yeah.
So, it's not like, I, I don't know.
It's not like exposing the.
Right, it's not exposing it, and you still have at least one layer wherever they've broken, so, you know, he's not gonna say it's not gonna leak, but he doesn't think it would be a problem if you waited till springtime.
Especially where it's not heated, up there, and snow's gonna fall off of it, so. Yeah, we can do that, and then, well, then if we do that, like I said, don't change the spec, and just wait till December.
Don't change it then, right.
Have them, you know, go with the twelve.
Right, we can always send it back out for bid if we have to.
Yeah.
And just plan for an early spring installation, so that way they can put it right first on the calendar.
Yeah.
Get, plan to.
Okay, so I need to send out an addendum for S one grade?
Well, um.
In slate Vermont?
Well, high, medium, and low, I think we'd say.
Yeah, I said I would go high, medium, and low.
How did, how did you, uh?
I don't remember reading anything about, um, qualities on that Vermont slate webpage, 'cause I know I went through that webpage, and I don't love to see anything about different qualities even being mentioned. Anyway.
How, how did you put that out to bid?
I posted it in the newspaper, on the.
Town hall page?
Town hall page, and then I mailed to the, the list, I sent out to four different vendors, that I had lists made of.
Isn't there also one on the webpage that you can?
Probably, yeah.
I mean, it's all associated.
But because we asked for a mandatory walkthrough, is that gonna void an application that comes in that didn't come in and look, go through the walkthrough?
Yes.
That's, uh, I, I guess I was surprised there are only two, for that size job, and only two people did it.
I got a couple of phone calls, but I did, they were asking about the dates, 'cause one said the date receipt and the date open, and they wanted to make sure there was just one bid out there, but for two types of interiors, I just got two phone calls, one of which I sent out the package to.
Interesting, well, when they did the walkthrough tip, was it just around the outside of the building? Yeah. So, they could've done the whole walk-around, yeah.
Yeah, but if they had.
Well, I mean, sometimes I just question. Right, yeah, I know, like.
Yeah, and one of the guy asked, whatever you call them things on the top of the roof, he says, I imagine you're gonna wanna save those, and, yeah.
Yeah, of course.
It's on the, our page.
So, that way both, everybody heard that, yes, from all savings, so we both know that, you know?
Right.
Well, it's on the, uh, deals.
Yeah.
Right, but, let's be honest, they don't always do those things, it's not always they should.
Yeah.
Wow, quarter of a dollar.
Are you serious?
I won't turn it to a ass, it's driving, what else you got?
Uh, okay, so we're all set on the roof?
I think so.
Yep.
I see, like, we will find some verbiage on, on the addendums.
On, on the new doors that we had installed with keypad.
Yep.
Yeah, I guess my first question is, uh, as the selectmen, who should have access?
Yeah, we can come to the policy.
Well, okay, that's right, so, who should have access to the, to come in and out of the building anytime they want, and should we?
I don't think us is.
Now, now she's, yeah, who, now, now she's, uh.
The gatekeeper?
Yeah, gatekeep, yeah, it's a good word, yeah, she's the one that's like, giving people the code, she would know who, who would have access, but, but, do we as the selectmen wanna make a policy as to who should have access to this building?
Well, it's on my head now, I think, you know, obviously, you know, the elected officials that need it, you know, that work here, the town employees that work here.
Yeah.
Uh, I mean, 'cause they gotta be able to get in and go to work.
Right now.
Chairs, chairs of boards and committees.
Right now, the police department has a, a code for them.
Yep.
The fire, um, department does not need a code, they have a key in the lockbox, but John has his personal code, 'cause he's inspector, and he has it, so that's where that stands, so, got it.
And then you got, uh, Steve.
I've got the department heads, the department employees.
I mean, you got Steve, you got Jerry, you got Linda, you've got Allison.
Joe Marie, the meeting lady.
Joe Marie, all right, anybody else?
Myself, those three selectmen.
Yep.
Um, there's gonna have to be the department, uh, the meeting committees that come in.
Committees, exactly, no, I'd say that, at least at the beginning, the chairs of those committees, and then possibly a vice chair, so that way there's one, at least two people in each committee that has that.
Yeah.
We're covered on the cemetery, right?
Yes, we are. Well, actually, I, well.
I haven't, I haven't got the, um.
Take that back, um, 'cause you brought up a good point, because if we have to sell a cemetery plot, and say, Tom and I are, we're not in town.
Yeah.
And it falls to Annette, she needs to get in, be able to get into the style cabinet.
I think that, yeah, I think that you'd have to include the three, and then same with the board of assessors, there's always, most, lately, it's only been two on the meeting, so it could be a combination of maybe two.
Well, I mean, do they need to come in here after hours and do something special?
Just for their meetings.
Just for their meeting setting, so.
Unless there's a, most time we're here.
Right, but anyway, with some trees, I mean, you get sort of passes away, and we can't come here.
Yeah, you definitely, that could be Saturday morning or Sunday night, oh, wow.
Exactly, yeah, so, you know, that's, that's kind of an exception, and not at all, well, there's actual keys, right, as well?
Okay.
It's been sold.
Yeah, there's only ten keys, and I don't plan on handing any of them out.
Yeah, she's not. No reason, hand out any of the keys.
No reason, right now.
And those are all locked up, and?
I have one on my set, and then John has one in the lockbox.
So, there's eight more.
Right, and then there's a card that I have to fill out, that lists who is authorized to go and have the keys remade, 'cause nobody else would be able, have them read out.
Okay, so you can't think of anybody else that you're gonna be.
Well, I will be giving them to selected, uh, departments, like the conservation commission.
Codes, right, you're talking about codes, or keys?
The codes, just codes, just code, passcode.
Yeah, who else besides you knows how to program the, um, the, the doors?
Nobody, but I typed up the directions, and there's two books, manuals that are pretty clear.
Okay. I'm just saying, they should be a backup.
Yeah, absolutely.
They should be, yeah.
'Cause when you win Powerball and say.
So, the other thing that, uh, Lean mentioned was that, uh, you can buy software to go with these keypads.
Yeah.
And so, you would always know who came in and out.
Yeah.
I think we should be doing.
Yeah, me too.
That, you want a budget for next year, just put it in the budget.
Yeah.
How expensive is the software?
I wanted, I think he said it was around three hundred dollars.
Oh, yeah.
For the software.
Yeah.
You must have money in the budget for that.
I could, I, I'll double check the price, and I'll let you know next month.
And we'll probably, that link right to our, um.
But, well, are those, are those battery operated, or is there a one-ten powered one?
There's four double A, these are blue.
Four double A.
Okay, so, is it?
It's a battery operator.
Okay, so, without the door being hooked to the computer system, the network, how would you know that we've recorded, is it wireless somehow?
I, I would say, it has to be wireless.
It's gotta be wireless, then.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not sure exactly how it works.
Yeah, I mean, well, before we go to buy software, we gotta find out how it actually works.
Yeah, let's make sure.
Yeah, I'll put that.
Okay, so, there's, there's other infrastructure we need to buy along with it.
Well, they, they, well, they, they took, yeah, well, they told her, all you needed was the software.
Oh, yeah, the silly book, that's possible, I mean, like I said, just, just do our due diligence, because if we buy the software, then we go to use it, it won't work, because we need to have some interface, or we need to hook, hook some wireless device to it.
Well, it must, it must explain that, and that's.
Yeah, I think it's a little.
Yeah, I think it does, I think it does, I'll look into it.
So, on, on the same note, and I've mentioned this before, now that we have these doors with, I've always said that, that there should be a limited amount of people that can get into the selectmen's office, on, on, off hours, right now, there's a ton of people.
Everybody in the block.
That can go in there, so I think we should do the same with that door, and get a keypad.
What else, security, you know, pad on the inside, that ain't gonna work anymore?
Well, it still works, but.
Well, our hoppers will have to take it out, so punch a code in, if they have a code, they don't get them, or.
It still, it still works, but it's so worn out.
It's gummy, it's just old.
That, that, one time it went off on me, and I know it's going off on, on other people.
Oh, yeah, the, the, the pad.
The pad's so worn out.
You know what, though, it's not a bad idea, putting a keypad lock on that door.
Oh, you have a keypad, or, you know, replace the one that's in there, that would use that security, because if they open the door, and they don't punch in the right code, it's gonna go off.
Right, but the code that's there now is a sa- single code, but I think the new ones, you all have different codes, don't you, with your All-Star?
I could program it that way, and I think.
Yeah, I could program it, so everybody has a code to punch in as well.
I think it's a good idea, and I believe with the one that I had.
The All-Star, the security.
That's a security track, everybody should have their own individual code for that.
Yeah. And the door thing, will they look into the All-Star and replace the old system?
I guess, what's like, the price of each?
Well, yeah, well, the thing with keypad, you could keep track of who's going in and out.
Well, you do that with a couple of security go, too, 'cause they keep track of that stuff, plus, we, we actually have secure, uh, security alarm on that thing for a change.
Okay.
I mean, I don't, I mean, it may be more expensive to go that route, but that's the case, then a keypad on the door may be the way to go, I'm just seeing, let's look at our options.
That's quite small, yeah.
Look at our options.
Okay.
The, the, the problem, yeah, see, we looked into that two years ago, and, and, and the problem was you just can't replace the pad, the keypad, 'cause that system is so old, it's not even, the company was bought out by, uh, I forget.
Wasn't that not surprising with the software we have around here?
But it, but it, but it's so old, and he looked to see if he could get a replacement pass, and he can't even get a replacement pass for that unit, so, if you were to replace the keypad for this, for the alarm system, you would have to replace the whole alarm system, so, remember that.
Yeah, and that's what they did with the library.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, that's what happened in the library, they replaced the whole system.
Yeah, yeah.
So, maybe, if we're supposed to go with a keypad, but, I mean, let's find out for certain.
I will, okay.
Let's check it out.
Okay, okay, the next thing I got is, I noticed, uh, last week when, uh, Joe Marie was working, that she doesn't, this selectmen's computer doesn't seem to have any software in it.
Oh, I was.
That she had to come into the tax collector's office and do her work.
Yeah, it might've been an oversight, I don't know, I have to look into it, he should've done it, and it, I thought it was there, it's just not either looking to the right drive, so there's something in the support.
Okay, we got it, sorry, I'm not right, we're paying for the software, the license already.
Yeah, oh, yeah, it's on, the, the icon's on the computer, it's just not talking to the path that it's supposed to be, so it's gonna.
Okay, oh, I see, so they make a note?
Yeah.
Again, I noticed, uh, when I was signing the checks today, that I don't. Again, I noticed, uh, when I was signing the checks today, that I don't know about you guys, but that credit card invoicing, to me, is one big mess, I couldn't make heads of it.
I didn't see it yet, because I was, I were looking here.
One of the questions I had was, and I forget what item it was, but we're paying for something that we just charged on the credit card two, three days ago. So, and it's coming out of state, so to me, there's no way we've received that material already, but yet we're paying for it. Is that what we wanna start doing, paying for stuff before we receive it?
Can I address this, can I ask the question of of Woody, I think it was a purchase that he made?
Oh, it was, oh, okay. Yeah, I can tell you the whole process, the process was, I got my quotes, I guess I'm the only one that does, but I got my quotes.
Yeah, you saw them.
Yeah.
Cleared it with me.
Yeah.
They did that, audited it, you know, uh, ordered it in the office, and I believe either you or I wrote on it that charged the credit card.
Yeah.
She told me that when material comes in, the material's already in, it's been in for two weeks now, we've already taken delivery of it.
Okay.
The paperwork was turned in, while Lean was on vacation, I turned the paperwork, thank to Allison, explained to Allison that Lean had the paperwork for this, that it was going on the town credit card. So I'll take care of that, it's the way I was told to do it, so I did it the way I was told.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure.
And, and so we already received the material two weeks ago.
I wasn't thinking some of that credit card are wrong, but I thought it was like uh nine twenty-one or something.
No, I've already got the material, it's been, it came in with them.
Well, unless they, unless, for some, unless they didn't charge the credit card till.
Yeah, I don't know, it came in all the two weeks ago.
They might have charged the credit card after.
Once it was shipped or something, I don't know.
Yeah, it might have, 'cause sometimes they just go home on those kind of things.
Yeah, yeah.
But even even this, the it, it, do we wanna make sure that we receive what we order before we pay for it?
Some, unfortunately, some things that we have to purchase, like Staples order, for example, and we put it on the credit card, because Staples' credit card is always a nightmare to pay. So we use the citizens' credit card, but we haven't taken delivery of the merchandise, but we can look at the invoice and compare it to what we ordered when we print out, you know? And Staples is good about not charging us for something that hasn't been shipped, because they back order, they may, we may go through the process of ordering something, and then they back out that twelve ninety-nine for something that's not, has to come from a different source, and we'll get it billed on a different. So there is, you know, our hands are tied to some extent when it comes to making purchases, um, I think they're going through the process of the phone quotes. I think Jeff's done the same thing, he's gotten a few quotes on the telephone quotes, but uh some of them, unless you have an account that you can set up, and they bill us, and it's a local vendor, if it's something that you have to order through. Um, somebody that doesn't, you know, service that type of item in the airfare, you have to order it online.
Oh, that's always a big problem, if you just use a credit card, especially like a malware, you know.
That could take that the right way.
Take that the right way.
Oh, they care about shit.
Let's shoot that voucher number.
Exactly.
Part of the problem is, we get the credit card bill, and it's only a turnaround of one week, like I got that bill last week, but we had to pay it by October first, which is next week.
Next Wednesday, yeah, next Thursday.
So next, next Friday, we'd be too late, and they charge, and they charge us a tremendous late fee, so I scurry around and try to.
Get it all done, of course.
Well, maybe, when it comes to credit card purchases, that, you know, whatever they made, whatever documentation that is out there from whoever is using it.
Yeah.
Gets into the office ASAP.
Oh, they do, they usually do, and we have a file that we file on purchases.
Yeah, most often, you can track that stuff, too, I mean, you know, everything today is, you know, logged on and tracked, you're sharing, you know, wherever it is.
And did you, did you, did you have receipts for every item that was listed on the credit card?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it takes me.
The one that we were missing is the one for Woody's, but that's because it's in the office somewhere.
Right, and I had his, I had his estimates and quotes, and I talked to him, and he said he received it, so I had to process it, because we're gonna get an fifty dollar late fee.
Right.
Right.
So an audit was conducted on it, though, I mean, you conducted an audit against that credit card statement, you're doing reconciliation, you know?
Yeah, you reconciled.
Yeah, well, they had charges.
No, I know, I get it.
And I was looking for receipts.
Yeah, we couldn't find them.
Then with with the charges, and so I was like, I'm trying to find a receipt.
Yeah.
I usually do a little matrix, but I, this time I didn't have time.
Good question.
I was just gonna say.
Well, you did.
I thought you guys were not talking, I was gonna, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
You got a question, though?
Well, I was just gonna say, and sometimes you're making your purchase a couple of days before that billing cycle ends, and that manufacturer or whoever is billing you the minute they ship it.
Ends, yeah.
Not that you received it, so you may not have the packing slip, you know, the receipt for receiving something, but it's in transit, like Tom said, you can track it.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can.
And I gotta tell you, the worst people are tracker FedEx, 'cause it's like snail mail, they take the longest.
Yeah.
And that's what happened with police.
'Cause I, that's happened, that's happened.
Right, so I guess what I'm saying, from knowing on the credit card, if you don't have a receipt to go with the charge, I think we wanna find a receipt.
Hey, you gotta pay it back anyway.
Yeah, but if we don't.
She's good about that, she really cracks my, the way that I get.
But if we don't pay, if we don't pay the bill, we're gonna get a fine.
Right, so I, I mean, if there's no receipt, gonna be a document from somebody who walked, at least, you know, some type of documentation as a, whether it's a, a, just a note or something like, you know, you know, they ordered it, it was two days before the billing site landed, haven't received it yet, you know, or something of that nature, so we at least have some type of statement somewhere.
Right. They do that on purpose, hoping you're not gonna pay, but.
Of course I do, they wanna beg it twenty percent.
Yep.
Cheers.
Well, maybe we should have the the pressure of him, find out if we can, 'cause I know on my credit card, they give me three weeks.
We don't get any three weeks.
Well, maybe we should find out why we're not getting three weeks.
I can ask him, so we can check that.
Is that credit card through uh citizens?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, maybe we can get it extended, maybe we can get like forty-five days or something.
Well, I always, I always ask the girls to make sure they stamp the actual bill, because it's proof that if we get it on, you know.
The date's stamped, right?
Yeah, eight days before it's due, and it takes, you know, signing it and then getting it out in mail, and then snail mail doesn't get it there for seven days.
I mean, 'cause we need to spell it, it's different than, you know, personal credit card, because you can just write a check whenever you want.
Right.
We have to go through a whole process to get it.
Process, right.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Maybe we can get extended payment plan.
We should get, you know, at least three weeks, from the time we get the.
Doesn't hurt to ask.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah, you can always ask them.
Mostly gonna say it's no, and then we'll have to say, oh, they don't take our business elsewhere.
Yeah.
And you'll find another crack.
Yeah, let's see.
Yeah, and both times, it's a bank, well, they opened their counter, they're, they're looking for the town's whole business, they have a name for it.
Oh, yeah, I saw that in both towns, they have that.
No, I don't, that's what I get right here.
Sugar River.
Sugar River?
Sugar River.
Sugar River.
Sugar River?
Create a new bank, yeah. Yeah?
Yeah, they opened a.
Sugar River Bank wants whole business.
A new bank, that's one of those brands.
With branch, yeah.
Sugar River Bank.
Very nice.
Okay, all right, so we're, you're gonna do that, right, ask Pam to extend that?
Yeah.
Okay, then, then a couple of weeks ago, uh, Tom asked about the profile report, remember that?
Yes.
So what's happening, I mean, we paid fifteen hundred dollars for that.
Well, we actually talked about that to C I P, and John Stevens was kind enough to give us an update on that.
Who?
John Stevens.
John Stevens.
Okay.
And basically, the, um, my understanding is that the person that was gonna do it did a draft, and then it was supposed to go back and forth, and by the time they got that done, and to the people in the uh, the group that was, um, steering committee, were deep in Old Home Day.
Same people, so they were stretched free sources.
And people. So they were stretched, yeah, exactly, so they, they figured, focus on Old Home Day, they'll come back to the profile report, so we should be seeing it hopefully in the near future, once they bump through it and proofread it. So he's aware that we're looking for it, but.
And 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 I'm not getting involved in the Kelsey Road dispute, but I just wanna know how we're doing with the turnaround, we were supposed to get a.
Easement, like when you just got that.
Easement, yeah.
Well, we were supposed to get a survey over there, so we could sell out the easement.
Oh, I also thought that the board had said that wait until we get a plan, see if that helps us at all.
Yeah, I thought we were just going forward with easement.
No, they're just gonna, yeah, chasing.
Yeah, the last, the last time I spoke to Jeff and Jacques, they were gonna communicate together, so I will like fire their Jeff.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, we were open again.
Yeah, 'cause Jeff's gonna need to be plowing, still, you know, before he knows it.
Exactly.
He's gonna be scrambling.
Yeah, we will, get that done ASAP.
Yeah.
Regardless, so now we got some anguish, now we just did get the survey, and.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I mean, I don't know if we have a plan, I mean, Jacques more than happy to, you know, utilize it.
Okay.
I don't feel good when he goes.
Right, Jeff said he just wanted to get down there with him and point out the area that he wants.
Excuse me, yeah.
You know?
Okay, then I wanted to uh go back to uh, we were talking about, I think it was the last thing, on removing a tree.
Yeah.
And I don't know if he talked about, we should have a policy on what happens with disposal of the trees, he didn't talk about that.
No.
No.
He talking about the wood?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause the way it is now, and there's nothing written, but but I talked to Jeff, and the way it works now, is if he's cutting a tree, and it's on somebody's, you know, right of way. So in front of their property, they get first dibs on it, and they think that's perfectly okay. If they don't want it, and then, and and they don't have anybody that they know of that wants it, he tries to dispose of it at the nearest location he can. For example, if a guy across the street say, yeah, I, you know, I'll take it, fine, you can have it, and I don't have any problem with that either, 'cause he doesn't have to handle it, okay? The problem comes with, when the tree that he's gonna remove is on town property, now he says, somebody had mentioned that they used to take it to the transfer station. And he says, I've been town road agent for eleven years, and I've never taken a piece of tree to the transfer station. So, I don't know, you know, he says, I'll do whatever the town wants, he says, but I'm not gonna take it. And he says, the problem is, they're not gonna start cutting it into a stove length.
Right.
They'll leave it in, you know, eight, ten foot sections, but now that we want somebody coming on town property, cutting it up, and leaving a mess? So I think we have to figure out, what do, what do we wanna do?
Absolutely.
Do we, and one time we talked about putting out the bid, someone wants to pay whatever amount to remove it.
The problem with that is, you get scavengers out there, as soon as the sun goes down, or someone's not looking, they gotta go by, start cutting up and loading it in their vehicle, real quick, I've seen it on the highway, believe it or not.
Yeah.
Yeah. Woody had his hand up there.
I'm sorry.
Oh, just in reference to what that said, that, I know Jeff doesn't remember, 'cause it was before Jeff's time, but, 'cause I've been in long with Jeff, they did do that at one point, they brought down wood down there, and just from my aspect, it was more of a hassle than anything. 'Cause they had the, someone wanted to come in, they wanted the wood, and they were down there, but they, they got permission from the town to go down there with their power saws cutting it, it was, trust me, it was more of a hassle than that, to bring it down there, trust me on that.
Right.
I mean, we leave wood out of the burn pile, and allow anyone to cut it, you throw it in the truck and take it, you know, if there's something decent, we'll throw it off to the side, rather than us burning it, you know, people will take that, that's one thing, but that whole deal with the wood, yeah, that, that was a big, big issue down there. Well, I know, um, a while back, I think when Ron was still on the board, um, 'cause Cindy, um, sure, Sharon, Patty Sharon, I always wanna call her Cindy.
Patty Sharon.
Um, but she had called there, 'cause they wanted to do a wood bank.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
And of course, I know that, you know, the the board then said, hey, you know, we don't wanna be doing that, don't want people, you know, running power saws at the, you know, at the transfer station or anywhere else on town property. So my take on it would be, whoever takes the tree down, have them hauled away, if it's on town property.
Yeah, okay, when I mentioned that to Jeff, he said, yeah, so they're, they're gonna be charging you to remove the tree, I mean, they're not just gonna take the tree.
Yeah, but otherwise you get a free-for-all, it's not gonna be hurt on town property.
Huh, are we trucking town property along the side of the road?
Like right out here in front of the cemetery?
Okay.
'Cause you get that tree, got hit by a light, you really take that down.
Okay.
Well, that's what I'm talking about, not one that's in front of somebody's house.
Yeah, yeah, the water's in them. Exactly, unless the town facility owns the road, but everything's an easement in town, that, so the tree's one of the property owners.
Right.
All right, so you're suggesting that when we hire somebody to cut a tree down, or some firm bought the, the file of the contract, is they all, all the wood away?
Right.
Okay, I got no problem with that, huh?
No, I just hope it doesn't cost us more than it's worth, that's all.
Usually, usually hardwood, they can.
Yeah, I know, somebody didn't want it, yeah, well, you might, you know, 'cause they, they want, I know, like, I don't know what this tree that got, taking down the room, the coven's, what that deal was, but that was a big tree, a lot of, a lot of oak. And, you know, they had a boom truck out there, and they were loading it up, so I don't know, you know, if they get compensated for the wood, I don't know.
I mean, the tree has value, so, I mean.
Yeah, it does.
So if they're gonna just haul it away, you know, for a part, pine, I could see would be useless.
Pine, yeah, could give it away.
I gave, I gave about twenty-three, ten foot stretches away to the lager.
Yeah. Yeah, lager might take it if you get enough of it.
Yeah, lager.
Yeah.
Exactly, if it's worth it as well.
But if you don't have enough, then it's gonna.
We just had like a bull pine, that's, I mean, awful, knots and twisted turns and branches, I mean, it's not worth anything for, you know, lumber or anything of that nature, it's just a nuisance.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And it pains me to sit, have someone take it away, to me, someone on the pizza size of weight, so.
Absolutely, but I guess you're probably, for some of us, do.
Yeah.
Leo?
He's right, it'd probably be cheaper to have it hauled away, but as far as getting in, reimbursed for the wood, I really doubt that. From, from past experiences, I've dealt with people, and what happens is, you you pay, they take the wood, chances are, they don't even want it either. You know, I mean, they have insurance to pay for, they have their equipment to pay for, they have their men to pay for, stumpage for hardwood is around twenty-five dollars, it's pretty high for stumpage for cordwood, so, you know, pretty much, uh, you're not gonna see any money out of it, it's just a cost, you know?
Problem, right?
I just don't want the cost, that's actually.
Correct, because if Jeff even hauls it away, there's an expense there, you know, I mean, it's a lot of limbs, I'll bet you, you know, so.
Right.
And they're the worst, a lot of them.
Yeah, you take the tree down, you know, and have someone come and grab it, you know, like, what are they gonna leave there, and you're gonna leave all the mess, and you have to clean it up, grind it, it's just a mess.
Lims. Let me a tree is the worst.
He said, yeah, 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 of course, he has them.
It's just a mess.
Oh, they grind them up, yeah.
You have on a tened.
It's easier.
Oh, right, it's probably the simplest, cleanest way to deal with that, you know?
I'm gonna take it out.
Yep.
Okay, so you wanna ask him, next time you get the.
Yep.
You know, goes out for a cord or whatever, so the guy tell him.
It was on town property.
Yeah.
Did you see?
Yeah, I, I.
Well, he's gonna be getting somebody to cut this down.
Right.
So we can ask him, how much to cut it down, leave the wood, and how much to cut it down and take the wood.
Well, the other day when I was here at Town Holton, they were cutting down the tree here, I sup- I suppose, was that yesterday, since?
That was yesterday.
Yeah, yesterday.
I, um, I spoke with those guys, that was Ben, um, Williamson, thank you, so I asked him to give us a two quotes, one on the tree, but right behind us here, and one on having that one down. So he's supposed to drop it off if it's convenient, so there's no rush. Yeah, well, I think you're gonna find, this tree here is gonna be expensive.
Oh, yeah.
Cause they're gonna wanna, oh, yeah, cause they're gonna wanna come in with a boom, they're gonna, they're gonna, oh, yeah.
And everything, every branch is gonna.
Every branch is a problem, yeah, yeah, that, that's gonna be a real hassle. But, but, should have been taken down two hundred years ago, seriously, really?
Yeah, let's, let's move forward, yeah, it's a long, plus.
Spend the next year end, or some other memo.
This is a record keeping meeting tonight, I really did this, I'm cleaning up. I just tell you why, buddy.
So, what happened since the last time we talked about the IT committee?
Nothing, really.
Yeah, okay, so I thought, I thought that you were looking into using credit cards.
Yeah, and I need to, Linda went to her thing a week or two ago, and I, I need to touch base with her, I'll send her an email, invite her to, uh, the next selectmen's meeting to let us know she's there.
Yeah, she was supposed to get all that information.
Yep, yep.
So you don't, you haven't talked to her.
I have not.
Okay, the last thing I wanna go over is, usually around this time of, of year, we, uh, send out a letter to the department heads.
Is really, I thought it was more like the end of October and November.
No, it's around, no, last year was, I bet you, early October, but, but I was thinking, and we talked about that earlier this year, is we should invite the department heads to come in. And, and discuss their budget with us, to see how they're doing, what they're planning.
I'm all for that, we should do that on a regular basis.
I think we did that last year, too, if they're not coming in with the cemetery stuff.
Yeah. With what they have remaining.
I always wanna play.
Was that budgeting time?
This is for the rest of the year.
Oh, alright.
Yeah, see what they have planned for the rest of the year, for expenses that they know of, instead of surprising us.
I'm doing that, yeah, would you be surprised to pull the, uh, the masses and see when they can come and see us reasonably?
Yeah, sure, rather than waiting.
Yeah.
Okay.